... members of our community fairly and to make decisions that promote the common good. Always in your name we pray, amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Vice Mayor Douthur?
Present.
Mayor Black?
Here. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for November 14th.
I saw a move, Madam Mayor.
Second. Any comments from the commission or staff? City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Now, entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any comments from the staff or commission?
Yes. I'd like to take the two things for purchasing stuff off the consent agenda and put them on probably unfinished business.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to remove item G1 from the original agenda and also item G2.
Thank you. I'll second.
City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Douthur?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. All right, next we have a presentation, this is for the law enforcement officer of the year, Deputy Shannon Roxby.
Mayor Roy, coming up, I'd like to say that Deputy Roxby has done an outstanding job. She was our community policing officer here in the city of Madeira Beach, and we kindly refer to her as the face of Madeira Beach as far as our law enforcement officers are concerned. She's done an outstanding job here in the city, just organizing everything and keeping us safe and keeping a check on everything that goes on. I know that if I have a problem or if any of the commissioners have a problem, Deputy Roxby is our point of contact for that. So, thank her very much on my behalf for everything that she does for the city of Madeira Beach.
You've done a great job since you've been here, and we're so glad that you can get this award. This is the 2017 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year presented to Deputy Shannon Roxby.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say thank you to the commission and Madam Mayor and chief and everybody, I appreciate it.
I should have brought them both with me at the same time.
Next, we have a presentation.
We're here tonight to recognize a couple of our finest. Obviously, the mayor mentioned John Sleppi. He's been a firefighter, paramedic with Madeira Beach for four years now. He's accomplished a lot in a few years. It's kind of ironic how he can be a firefighter a year already after only four years of his service, but it shows his dedication with the job. He's amazing on both fire and EMS calls. He's the first to take on extra jobs around the station. He gets along with anybody here in our department. He's got a positive attitude all the time. He is chosen by all of us in the department, 12 of us. Every year, we pick one person that shows the outstanding above everybody else, and this year, we want to recognize John Sleppi. He's also going to be starting our acting lieutenant program this year. He's also took the initiative to take all the classes to begin that course. There's multiple classes that he has to take to be an acting officer, and he's already accomplished that in a few short years. So, I appreciate everything you've done, John Sleppi, and congratulations.
Our next presentation is the promotion of Clint Belk to fire inspector.
No. Firefighter, paramedic Clint Belk has been with us for about six years. He's also one of our acting lieutenants. He spent all six years putting out fires, and now he's going to prevent them. He's taken his inspector class, so he's moved over to our full-time inspector position for the city. He started January 1. So, he's going to be making all of our businesses safe and all our multi-residential units safe for all of us. So, I'm here to congratulate him for his advancement to full-time fire inspector for the city of Madeira Beach, and with that, he gets a gold badge.
Next, we have the Veterans Boat Parade in donation towards the 9/11 memorial, Pam Rasmussen.
Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you all very much for being our title sponsor again this year. It's our 21st year of our Veterans Boat Parade. This started many years ago to honor the veterans, and it got larger and larger, and every year, they ended up with funds left over every year. So, they thought, okay, well, let's start making donations to some veterans charities. We're very diligent about that now. This year, our focus was on PTSD and veteran suicide because we know that that rate, they say every day 22 veterans are succumbing to suicide. They actually think that rate is much higher because a lot of them are slipping through the cracks and we're not finding them. So, all year long, we've done fundraising, and we have here tonight to present some of those checks to some of those organizations. This is Roger Gerstung, my co-chair.
Thank you, Pam. Again, I want to thank the commissioners and everybody that backed this event again, and of course, Dave at the marina. You guys did a great job. We couldn't have done it without you all, and the sailboat and everything kind of went smooth. We had a rough stretch of weather right before, and skies opened up, and everything was beautiful on Saturday, and we had a great parade, great turnout. We had over 30 boats. John Sleppi, I think he just left, but, oh, there he is, I'm sorry, can't see you back there. He brought his 9/11 memorial boat in, and I think he can attest to what a great event it was. We raised quite a bit of money, and as Pam says, it does go to local veteran charities. All the money stays right here within the American Legion, Bay Pines, and then some other local veteran charities that we've selected. I would also like to thank the rec center and, of course, the fire department and Crossbridge Church. Fire department had the ladder truck out, and they were able to take some great photos. I think one of them ended up on the front cover of the beach beacon. So, thank you for that.
Bill Carnes was also there, Brock Park, with his drone and did some great video, overhead video of us, and it was amazing. If you don't know about us, go to our webpage, veteransboatparade.com, or Annual Veterans Boat Parade at Facebook, and you can see some of those pictures and videos.
So, I guess we could start with, the first one is, Carol, having on earth for veterans. And I'll have Carol explain a little bit about the charity that they put up.
Well, I'll tell you a little bit, I have a little story about this. These ladies work with homeless veterans. Some people are like, well, what does homeless veterans have to do with PTSD or veteran suicide? Actually, I met one of our participants this year who was a boat captain in the parade, had his boat in. Come to find out, he came to me after the parade, he was a former tenant of theirs who lived in his car out here at the beach. His ship was attacked, he had many injuries. So, by staying here in his car at the beach, he was able to get back and forth to Bay Pines much easier. Somehow, he got connected with these two women. They got him off the street, they got him into home, he got himself turned around. Now, he's a productive citizen back in the, you know, society and was a participant. So, I think that's kind of come full circle to what they do, and he said if it had not been for them, he would have taken his life. Again, I want to thank all of you. The Veteran Boat Parade is very near and dear to our hearts. Sheila Mottasio and I started this on our own dime in 2011, and what we do is we buy houses, refurbish them, furnish them, and rent rooms to homeless or at-risk veterans. And so, what Sheila and I did, because we didn't want to wait to start raising money as a nonprofit, although we are one, we decided to refinance our own home a series of twice and then take out a home equity loan, and we purchased eight homes in South St. Pete. And we've gifted them to the nonprofit. The nonprofit is, we were able to, last year, buy our ninth home vacant lot, and this spring, we'll start breaking ground on our 10th home in South St. Pete. So, 100% of our donations go to help veterans. Thank you. So, also, while we were doing some of our research to find out who we were going to donate these charities to, I came across an article in the newspaper, and it spoke about retired Major Scott Maxim from the Veterans Art Center of Tampa Bay. And there was a story about how, yeah, come on up, Major. It was a story about how a veteran went into an office to get some benefits for his veteran's disability and things like that. And he was at his wits' ends, he was ready to go out and find somewhere to go ahead and take his life. He stumbled into the art center, which happened to be right across from the benefits office, and he said because of some of the programs and the things that Major Maxim has going on there, that it turned him around and it saved his life. Otherwise, he would have killed himself. So, we'd like to donate $2,000 to the Veterans Art Center of Tampa Bay.
I'll keep it brief here again. I've been working on the Veterans Art Center since 2014, so we're going in our fifth year. And I invite everybody to come out. Actually, we're just south of Tyrell Mall, next to the vet center, next to Chili's, so I invite everybody to come out. And currently, we have nine programs through mental health and healing and suicide prevention, i.e., alternate therapy. So, again, thank you very much and look forward to having a good year, and thank you.
Our last charity tonight, we were working with a gentleman over at Bay Pines, Nate Witt, and Nate couldn't be here tonight, but his assistant Frank, and I'm sorry, Frank, I don't remember your last name.
Joe.
Frank Jones, well, that was pretty easy. Luckily, Nate is out getting a van donated to him, correct, for the Bay Pines. So, but we were working with Nate trying to figure out organizations, and there's not very many organizations that deal with veteran suicide. And he goes, you know, we can always use the money too. We have the new mental facility here. We have all kinds of different programs that deal with PTSD and veteran suicide. So, in talking with Roger and I back and forth, we were like, it makes the perfect sense to give this money to them, $5,000, to be used towards our programs that are dealing with PTSD and veteran suicide. So, thank you, Frank.
We had a special donation this year from American Commercial Construction. Keith Powers and his wife, Casey, where has she go? Raise your hand. Oh, come on up here. Keith's not feeling very well, so Casey's going to handle this one. Keith's a contractor, and he heard about what we do with the Veterans Boat Parade and with the local donations, and he actually donated, or both of them donated, our backyard contest party prizes, which one of the backyards that was along the parade road was the most decorated, so they won those. There was a pair of kayaks donated by Keith and Casey. But he donated, he said, Roger, he says, I do roofing. He says, I want to donate a roof to a deserving vet. So, we know we just had the hurricane, so American Commercial Construction is donating a roof. We have the deserving vet here, Jack Goretto, and Goretto, and he's getting a brand-new roof donated by American Construction. Did you have a few more people to thank?
Right. So, these aren't the only checks that we donated. We gave some to other charities that the American Legion asked us to also represent and donate to, so we made, what, over $10,000. So, this is just a small portion of what we were able to give away to other charities as well. One thing that happened, every year, we have a 9/11 ceremony at our beautiful memorial right here on the Tom Stewart Causeway. Unfortunately, Hurricane Irma had something to say about that this year, and we weren't able to do that. So, we tried to incorporate some of our opening ceremonies along with a 9/11 ceremony, and we decided that it was only fitting to make a donation to the 9/11 memorial and firefighter Sleppi, if you wouldn't mind coming up and accepting this from us. We know that there's ongoing maintenance and things like that that go on with that memorial, and like we mentioned earlier, he has a boat that is a tribute to 9/11 and to the firefighters that lost their lives that day, and one in particular, firefighter Stephen Coakley, who was in the Trade Center Tower 2 when it collapsed that day. And he was a dual resident, both in Brooklyn and here in Madeira Beach. He wasn't supposed to be on duty that day, but he stayed over after his shift and went there and lost his life. So, this donation is going to go to the memorial on behalf of firefighter Coakley and firefighter Sleppi, because I think he embodies what every firefighter wants to be like, and the way that he's taken this boat and turned it into a memorial for not only Steve but 9/11, we're very thankful and grateful for that. So, thank you, John. I think that about wraps it up.
Again, I want to let everybody know, thank you all for appropriating the seed money for this event this year. We had such an outpouring from the local businesses in the community. I think we've got our advertising book back there, so in the story about the firefighters' boat is in there as well. But we had 40 or 50 local businesses that donated either cash, merchandise, or the time, and it was just a great outpouring. So, thanks to Madeira Beach. Thank you for letting this event go off as it did.
And thank you, Commissioner Lister, Douthur, for your service to the country as well. I know you guys are veterans, so thank you.
I would like to thank you guys on behalf of all the veterans and what you do for them. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
It's a great event, and I want to thank you as well. Next presentation is from CalA America, a discussion on implementing the new parking machines.
And Madam Mayor and commissioners, Natalie Pick is here from CalA, and she came here to talk about the new machines before they were installed, and she's here now to answer any questions that you might have.
Major Maxim, retired Army veteran that runs the Veterans Art Center of Tampa Bay, has something that he'd like to present to the mayor and the city of Madeira Beach.
They can't see it, but you guys can. On behalf of the Veterans Art Center, every year, we commission a piece of artwork or a photo of an eagle, because it has various meanings. This is 2018's from Staff Sergeant Retired Howard Miller. He's 100% disabled veteran. He's taken up photography, so he's going to work closely that he's a cancer survivor as well, living in Clearwater. So, we selected this Colorado eagle, and on behalf of the Veterans Art Center, because he needs it here, because it's the ability, right?
That's beautiful.
Thank you very much, I very appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
And we got to figure out where to put it. Wow, we just talked about parking, get to follow that.
So, we, the last time I was here, we did the presentation, we talked about the benefits of pay-by-plate. The meters have been installed, and it's my understanding that there are a lot of questions and some great things that were brought up by Nancy about a pamphlet and, you know, how can we incorporate different things? What can the kiosks provide us as far as information? So, I wanted to take this time to just kind of answer your questions, if there are any concerns, and then we can just kind of have an open discussion, and then I can explain, you know, CalA's been doing pay-by-plate, and pay-by-plate has been rolled out in the U.S. since 2012. The city of Pittsburgh was the first kind of large municipality to roll out pay-by-plate, and it has been very successful. I've been in the parking industry for the last 14 years, which is kind of scary, and we've seen a lot of change, and change in, you know, when Madeira Beach first rolled out their parking kiosks, everything was pay-in-display, and then it moved to pay-by-space. And then, kind of the next evolution of all things parking is tying everything back to the license plate. That gives us the ability to roll out a residential permit program, tying everything to a license plate, so that we don't have to issue separate permits. We can kind of track everything and all kind of on-street and off-street parking within one system. We now have the ability with going with pay-by-plate to track occupancy. So, now we can see what are our peak times? Do we need to adjust times later in the day, earlier in the morning, in order to kind of even out parking? We have the ability to issue and create those non-resident cards, where people would kind of use it as a prepaid credit card, or, you know, it's good for a year, where instead of putting in money at the kiosk, they would swipe this card, it would say, yes, you know, you've already purchased this. We still want you to enter in your license plate, because we need that information for enforcement purposes, but then everything's tracked in the back office, not as far as your license plate isn't being tracked. The occupancy, you know, where are people parking? Do we need to incentivize people to park in different areas? We know that there's always going to be kind of a main corridor, main hub. Do we need to, you know, decrease the parking rates in kind of the perimeter area so that we can open up more Main Street and those downtown, you know, busier areas to push people out? And pay-by-plate gives us the ability to do this. So, I know that the permit, the meters have been installed, we got the signage. So, having the signage now, and over the meters, that's double-sided signage, that kind of explains, you know, what is expected. So, remember your plate number, go to the kiosk, type, you know, type your plate in, and it explains kind of step-by-step all the different processes in order to do that. So, I think with the rollout, not having signage, it might have been a little less than ideal with people being a little bit confused, just because it's new, right? It takes a little bit of time to get used to. But now that we've got the signage, the signage is going to be installed relatively quickly. We have the ability to allow people to also pay with a mobile payment application. So, instead of having to interact with the meter all the time, they will now be able to kind of store their information, especially a lot of the non-residents that are coming in, you know, to enjoy the beach, can download an app, the Way to Park app, their information's stored there, their license plate is already stored there. So, basically, they just get to the area, type in that area number, and then away they go to the beach. They can also extend their time, you know, sitting at the beach and not having to go back to the meter. So, there are a lot of benefits to pay-by-plate. Again, it's, anytime you roll out something new, there's going to be confusion. We have to do good public marketing, public outreach. CalA has the resources to help the city with an informational pamphlet. We are the ones that created the signage that's going to be put up. So, we're here as a business partner to help the city through this transition and to kind of coach the city along with all of the benefits of going with pay-by-plate, from more, you know, efficient enforcement to being able to, you know, give your residents kind of a more seamless way to park downtown with either out having to pay or with a reduced rate, as well as your non-residents by being able to have kind of that prepaid card and use that at the meters.
Do you have any examples of the signage?
It is, it was delivered today. I didn't take pictures of it, but it was approved by the city.
Yes, we, Chris just picked those up from CalA this morning.
It just would have been really good if we would have had the signage up before, because I'm probably the biggest, you know, I mean, John's passed quite a bit, and I see people just going up and getting frustrated and walking back in their car and seriously leaving. So, I asked for the numbers to last December and this December and what we were doing. And, you know, we were on a roll for our parking. We were always going up, and it's slightly down. It's not terrible.
And that's understandable. I mean-
It is, it's new. I understand that. It is new, but we should have had signs up when we put the machines in. That may not be your fault, it may be your fault, I don't, I don't know, but it doesn't matter, I'm not trying to blame anybody. It's just, when we rolled this out, we should have tried to make it as easy as possible, and that's simply not the case. I, again, personally stand by a machine today, and the lady gets out, and she just simply doesn't know her tag, and she goes back to her car, and she actually leaves, but that's, I don't know, I don't know if it's common or not, but I wouldn't know if she was there, I don't know what reason she was there. I didn't interact with her, I'm just watching.
No, I understand, and I think that the way that the meters were rolled out and whether it needed to be delayed with getting the meters on, the new meters on-street until we had the signage, we had been working with the city kind of since the beginning of this project, and I'm not really sure. This is an example of the new signage, so it'll be a lot bigger.
I think my other, my other thing was like, there was no dollar bill slot, so, you know, can we put quarters only somewhere? I mean, maybe we, as a city, can put that up, because there's a lot of change machines down there, but there's no slots for dollar bills.
Right, so that was a decision-
I don't think there was slots for dollar bills at the other ones.
-to choose to go coin and credit card only.
Right, right.
99% of all beach communities, because of the humidity, don't accept bills. I think even Pinellas County, Clearwater, have taken and closed off their bill acceptors just because money is so dirty. So, the original meters, the pay-in-display meters, were only coin and credit card as well.
Exactly, yeah.
So, that was a decision-
It's just one more confusion on the person's parts that came there for the first time. And a lot of people that were already used to the system are a bit frustrated.
Right, and I do think that with proper signage being put up, that frustration will go away, because it is pretty clear that you need to pay by plate.
I agree, I agree. And I also read where the two handhelds are going to be accessible so that we can start our mobile application.
We need the contract, to extend the contract with Compass this evening in order to make that happen.
Can they make any designations, like if handicap people come to the beach a lot, can they go in and just have their tag number? Because it doesn't matter, they park for free anyway, anywhere. So, you can just designate them as handicap as long as they bring the correct information in?
Absolutely. So- So Deerfield Beach also has pay by plate and has rolled that out and has been very successful. Again, handicap parking is free, but they still need to capture the person's license plate. So in essence, they would go up to the meter, we would have like a handicap button. They would type handicap, so it's not going to charge them, but it is going to ask them for their plate information, just for enforcement purposes.
But can they come in and sign up with the city?
They very well could if they.
And so then, then all that would just be automatic and they'd be like a resident?
Yes. And so then, from an enforcement standpoint, they wouldn't have to interact with the meter at all. So from an enforcement standpoint, if I were an enforcement officer, I would type their license plate in to see if it were valid. And then it would pop up and show they are a handicap parker and they're, have a valid parking session.
I see that the company is going to take on the responsibility of the maintenance on the parking meters. Is that correct?
That is correct. So Calais, our headquarters is here in Clearwater. We were the vendor that supplied your existing meters and we just basically upgraded them. We are in Clearwater and have a service technician that is coming to do all the preventative maintenance. We do work with the parking team closely just to make sure that a receipt roll isn't low. Those are types, those are things that the city is typically responsible for. But from a preventative maintenance and like a large maintenance standpoint, yes, Calais is responsible for that.
Okay, like during the hurricane season, we may have spoke about this before, but if you could just refresh my memory a little bit, you said there was a device in the machine that actually comes out?
The batteries. So we would recommend to pull the batteries out of the meters. What we did, and I'm not sure how, what the city did, in Key West, we pulled the batteries, wrapped them in Saran Wrap, and let them weather out the storm. So they're stainless steel, they've been on the beach. I mean, we have 37 accounts in the state of Florida. So it was just a matter of pulling the battery out and then, you know, unwrapping them or bagging them. And that would be the city's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have covers for them?
We have a cup, we don't make the covers, but there are covers that you can purchase for them. Typically, what we find is the covers, just because we, this is such a humid climate, that the covers will actually trap more moisture in the meter. And so what we've found is by removing the battery and actually, for a hurricane, wrapping them in Saran Wrap is kind of the best defense, honestly.
SD cards? I know there's a couple on the beach that I spoke with Walter today, and there's a couple that don't have the SD cards. Do we have access to the SD cards once they're installed?
Absolutely.
Actually, they, I was informed that at least on 133rd, that SD, SD card was installed today.
The machine was installed today, I think, at 133rd.
The machine was actually installed, I think, on the 27th, or, I'm sorry, beginning of, the beginning of January.
Yeah, I think it was installed today. But we do have the SD card.
Yes, you have access to all of the programs, all of the SD cards. The SD cards, I mean, it's not a proprietary anything. You have access to the program, the SD cards can be taken in and switched out, and the programs can be changed. Yes, and the city has full access to that.
Are those SD cards periodically taken out by Calais and taken and downloaded? Or is it automatic download?
It's an automatic download, so you don't have to go out to the meter in order to like push updates or rate changes or anything like that. As with all things technology, especially being out in the elements, things can kind of get corrupt, just like.
Sure.
Cell phones.
Absolutely.
So you can take the SD card out, download the program to a new SD card and put it in there. So, and it's super simple to do.
And I may have asked this last time, and I apologize if I did, but we do have access to dynamic pricing, right?
You do have access to dynamic pricing.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Actually, point of clarification, the new parking machine was, was put there on December 29th. And the parking lot was paved and striped and ready to go on the 27th. So we were pretty quick, we were pretty quick to get the machine there. And Dave's staff did a good job putting the striping on that lot, so.
So with the new signage, other things that are kind of, and I know that most of your kind of paid parking is from people, non-residents, but when you're talking about the calendar, which was a really good idea, other cities and things to look at, it's kind of where you, we don't want to recreate the wheel. The city of Deerfield Beach did a great job with paid, to put on their website as far as kind of a marketing outreach. If you're coming to the city of Deerfield Beach, they did a really cute video of how the machines work. And the machines are set up the exact same way yours are. So if you wanted to kind of look at that and gain inspiration, I think that's a really good video. But we can also send over different organizations that have done different informational pamphlets and those types of things to pass out to, you know, different locations to just kind of get the information out there. But this, putting the signage up is going to be huge. Yeah.
I just wanted to say, and Commissioners too, I think Chris Tarkington has done an excellent job in this implementation. Actually, it was written up in an international magazine, Parking Network, and Chris was, was quoted favorably in that, that article. So I think he's done a good job.
Chris has been wonderful to work with. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda is the daislog, and we have no daislog. Yes?
There's a question.
Sure.
The Snack Shack, the machine is there. If not every day. Oh, sorry. Oh, hi. Oh, I have to give my address. 4996 Miramar, Madeira Beach. Okay, Lori Tyner. I'm the GM of the Snack Shack, and if not every day, every other day, one of the machines is breaking. Something's going wrong. It says out of order. The tapes all wound up in there. We're all the time having to write things for people that they tried to pay for parking and can't. And so I didn't know if, whenever you're doing this, if there's a preventive maintenance, maybe once a week or something, because something's not working because we're dealing with it all the time. And people are getting really aggravated. And I know they're new, but.
There is one problem with the paper jamming, and it is the paper. And we are working with Calais to resolve that. So we have, it's not just that machine. We've noticed several machines jamming with paper. And, and again, we hope to resolve that. It's just working out.
People are coming up saying it says it's out of order, they can't pay, they don't want to get a ticket. What do they do? And, you know, we're kind of lost a little bit. And we're just like, well, just go talk to the city if you get a ticket. So it's just, I don't know if there's a way for preventive maintenance, maybe once a week, having somebody come out there and check. And that would be stretching it once a week because it gets a lot of activity, but I know that we're having a hard time with them.
Also, by the way, if, if, if people are confused, we're not writing them a ticket. And if.
No, I tell them to come, that y'all are really good about it. So I instruct them and I tell them, you know, and they're like, I don't want to go. And I said, no, they're very cooperative. They know, they're new machines, but, you know, it's just, I, y'all needed to know that there's been just a lot of problems with it.
And we'll work on it. Yeah, and try to come up with something for it. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is public, oh, yes, yes, sir.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore. To me, it seems like we've paid a lot of money for these machines, and we have a maintenance contract with them, and we're losing revenue because of a piece of paper. That sounds kind of ridiculous. And, you know, somehow, maybe the people can be backcharged, the company, or whatever the case may be, but we're actually losing revenue because these machines are not making money for us. And I think that's wrong.
Anyone else care to speak on this subject? Public comment is next, however. I would like to read a statement prior to the public comment.
We do the daislog first?
I'm sorry?
The daislog.
There is no daislog.
Okay.
I don't know if any of you have seen this letter that Robert Preston has put out. It's a letter, email, in this past week. And there are two sides to every story, and I would like you to hear my side as I refute most of what he has said in this letter slash email. One of the things he says is the group campaigned on deceitful lies. First of all, there is no proof. He does not say what these lies are. And, and I would like to know what deceitful lies that we have put out there. He, he also said that, oh, he spoke about one of our residents, Bill Gay, who has been trying to keep the development a little bit lower, and said that his issue was with the view. And if anybody knows Bill Gay, you know it's not about his view, it's all about the traffic. And we will likely have a lot of traffic. He says that they have done nothing to promote open and integrity-driven government. The following lodged complaints against Mayor Black, Oakley, and Dowther. Nancy Oakley had pending ethics violations. This is not true. And even if it was, it'd be nice if you could tell us what they were. Mayor Black, Oakley, and Dowther have sunshine violations pending against them. This is not true. I think I would know if I had a sunshine violation placed against me. And if that's true, please tell me what it is. Oakley and Dowther have been videoed in a conversation with Linda Hine, a resident who has sued the city developers, a direct sunshine violation. I don't believe that is a violation. She can speak to whoever she wants. She's a private citizen. And secondly, do you even know what they were talking about? In the commission meeting, Mayor Black used the word "we," alluding to discussions between Mayor Black, Oakley, and Dowther and predetermined outcome prior to the public meeting, disregarding input from Commissioner Hodges, Enlistor, and public comment. I did use the "we," word "we." It was in April of last year. I was alluding to prior comments made prior to the election. Mayor Black and Oakley and Dowther had a hidden agenda that was not revealed until coming into office, much of it orchestrated by a commissioner who resigned her position the previous year. We had no hidden agenda. We made it quite clear that the administration needed a change, and that's why we were running. The agenda was to fire the city manager, the city clerk, and firing the Parks and Recreation Director was not part of my agenda. It took months to fill the city clerk position, and currently filling the position of city manager is pending at eight months with no end in sight. Really? We just, we're going to be interviewing next week nine candidates, so we should have a city manager very, very soon. Within a few days of interim city manager Daryl O'Neil, of being the interim city manager, he called Doug Andrews into his office and fired him with no cause or reason. This isn't true either. He, he was fired for a reason, and the reason was insubordination. He was given a chance to apologize, that that did not happen. Voices were raised, and Doug was asked to go home, and he came back a few days later and, again, no apology. Not only did Mayor Black, Oakley, and Dowther knowingly and willingly for months mislead and, and mismanage government, all the while abusing tax dollars, but they continued to pay O'Neil during this period, which, while he was unemployed by the city of Madeira Beach. He was never unemployed by the city of Madeira Beach. That's why he was continued to be paid. City Attorney Trask wanted nothing to do with the newly-elected commission. I'd like to know how you know what Trask wanted or why he resigned. His contract expired on the 31st of December. He chose not to renew it. In a commission meeting, Mayor Black told Commissioners Lister and Hodges that they should forfeit their positions immediately because of a charter violation and signing the re-competition. Mayor Black had to apologize to them in a public, in public at a later commission meeting after receiving a letter from the city attorney, saying her statement was untrue and not factual. What I actually said was, if it's untrue, I will apologize. The fact of the matter is, there was a sunshine violation. I have it right here. It is signed by the Honorable Jack Day, Circuit Court Judge, on, on March 6th. Says, based on the undisputed fact that the court.
Madam Mayor, please. Point of orders. Let's, you know, I've been here 10 years.
Yes, sir.
And we, we have tried and tried not to make this personal. We, we don't, we don't even want to mention people's names. We're Commissioners, okay? Why, why are you just beating this right now? Stop.
Because things are being said to me that are, to every, the public, that are not factual.
And you can certainly answer, you can certainly answer them, Madam Mayor.
And I am.
But you don't have to answer them up here at this dais, at this meeting. You can certainly go out there and talk to anybody you want to. Call Sheila Estrada, call the paper and, and put your side out there. But it's unfair for you, just you, to come up and, and give your side of the story. You ask people to come up here during public, and we don't, we don't banter between them. They, they speak to a commission as a whole. They don't speak to Maggie Black. They speak to this commission. Whatever said there is said to me, and Nancy, and John, and Nancy, you, you can't get, you can't retaliate personally, Madam Mayor.
I am not retaliating.
It's, it's the wrong venue to do. I'm sorry. I've been here 10 years, and I've never heard this ever happen before. It's just not, not proper.
I am sorry, I have a right to speak. I am not retaliating. I am simply stating facts as I see them.
And you, you're certainly welcome to do that, Madam Mayor. Just not on this dais.
Well, that's what I'm doing.
Yes, ma'am, you are.
At any rate, as I was saying, there is a sunshine violation that has been filed. I think I made an apology at this point. Let me see. In their mismanagement and poorly-led meetings, the following opportunities have been missed for the city of Madeira Beach. The Ladies Fishing Tournament was held in Treasure Island because the newly-elected mayor and commissioners do not look favorably upon it. This is not true. I did not turn down this tournament. The old salt king of the beach tournament is now up in the air because of this trio. Again, this isn't true. I don't believe we've turned down any events. The last standalone music concert that was held in Madeira was held at the Levroq's property where they had to pay a stage, have a stage built, instead of paying fees to the city of Madeira Beach to hold the concert on their stage at Rock Park. Bringing concerts to the city, I believe, is the responsibility of the Rec Department. The owner of Levroq's property, Jim Holden, did not have to build a stage instead of paying for fees to the city to hold a concert in Rock Park. As far as I know, he never even inquired about having a concert at Rock Park. It was a private venture. He built the stage because he wanted to have a series of concerts that hopefully would be successful and profitable. Nearly every decision that is made by Mayor Black, Oakley, and Dowther degrades the city's reputation. I believe that the city commission has accomplished quite a bit since being elected. The city was without a city manager, a city clerk, a planning director, and a finance director. Since the new commission was elected, we have filled those three positions and are very close to hiring a city manager. We have reestablished a number of committees and are now having regular workshops. We've reached out to the Florida League of Cities to help Madeira Beach come up with a strategic, strategic plan. And the city was instrumental, as well as myself and the chief, in mediation with Holiday Isle and Madeira Beach Town Center, which resulted in scaling back the projects and having, and the suits being dropped against the city. The Boca Seega Neighborhood Stormwater Project and Lightning Projects in John's Pass are complete. Events continue in Madeira Beach, festivals, movies on the beach, sporting events, et cetera. And contrary to some, the new commission does favor events in Madeira Beach. In closing, it's a new day and it's a new year. And instead of dividing the city, let's all work together to unite our city. We all love our city. Come on, people now. Smile on your brother. Everybody get together. Try to love one another right now. Thank you. The floor is now open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone clearly. If this is for anything that is not on the agenda, and state your name and address. Yes?
My name is Linda Hine. I live at 401 150th Avenue in Madeira Beach, 33708. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Linda Hine, the ones having illegal conversation. I can't have an illegal conversation. It wasn't Nancy, John, and I. I'm not going to belabor this. There was other people there. We went there because I wanted to go and share the tacos there. The tacos and the salsa was awesome. It's Castaway's Taco Rita. It's a great place to go. We were there having tacos. We were not having some kind of meeting. There were other people. I live in the same building with John. Why would I go to Taco Rita to talk to him? Anyway, that's it. Bye.
Rebecca Parkhead, 117 Coventry Court, Naperville. Rebecca Parkhead, 117 Coventry Court, Naperville, Illinois. I've been coming to Madeira Beach for over the past thirty years and have always found the city to be friendly, charming, and quaint. Unfortunately, in recent months, the community has been torn apart by vicious, nasty, disrespectful individuals attempting to recall truly newly-elected commissioners. I believe in the recent election, citizens of Madeira Beach were fed up with business as usual, the over fourteen million dollar city debt incurred by the previous administration, and corruption of certain city officials. The majority of Madeira Beach citizens wanted change. Their voices were heard. Most voters had lost confidence in the previous administration and wanted them out. In March of 2016, Mayor Black and Commissioners Oakley and Douthat were elected. We finally had honest, trustworthy, responsible leaders committed to working hard to serve and listen to the citizens of Madeira Beach. I have attended previous Board of Commissioner meetings and was appalled to learn that the previous administration had increased the city debt by over fourteen million dollars. That's huge. The interest of fourteen million dollars is astronomical. Two million dollars is due in 2019. The previous administrators' actions demonstrated total disregard for the residents who were greatly concerned with projects and had requested a special referendum. The concerns of the citizens were ignored, which led to many residents feeling disrespected and greatly betrayed. A great deal of controversy has surrounded the previous city manager, Shane Crawford. Mr. Crawford was expelled from the International City Managers Association for ethics violations. This is very serious to be expelled from a professional organization. Mr. Crawford had a forty thousand dollar a year slush fund that he used at his discretion with many unexplained charges and ambiguous invoices that are presently being investigated. Mr. Crawford recently submitted his application for city manager after resigning previously a city manager and receiving a hefty payoff from the city to get rid of him and his wife. Last week, Mr. Crawford posted, "And next door in Madeira Beach. In the meantime, I am gone. I'm out of politics and don't want me or my family dragged through any lager. The only people keeping my involvement and issue is you guys. Mr. Crawford, if you're out of it and out of politics, why are you still here?"
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Yes?
I'm Barbara Donovan. I live on Marguerite Drive, 14066. I just want, I really don't have anything to say, except I want to know who my commissioner is. When Mr. Crawford was introduced, was my first commission meeting, and I spoke, I asked to speak to my commissioner, and I was told it was Mr. Lister. Mr. Lister very nicely met with me because I was mortified that Shane Crawford was going to chew gum the night he was introduced as our manager. But that's just a thing. I'd like to know who my commissioner is, and I'd like to request a brief meeting with them at their convenience, but before March the 15th.
It's me, and I will meet with you.
Okay. How do I get in touch with you?
We'll get you the information after the meeting.
Okay. I may not stay till the entire meeting.
Okay.
How can I get in touch with you?
I'll get it to the clerk, and she can give it to you.
I'm sorry.
I'll get it to the clerk, and she can give it to you.
That would be great.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me ask about that.
Certainly. Thank you.
It's been, whatever, how long ago Shane was here. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Good evening, Anne Rayo, 557 Crystal Drive. Can you hear me? Okay. It doesn't really take a lot of talent to talk into a microphone. Okay? Because some of us can't hear. To my commissioners, to my mayor, to everybody involved in the city, I mean, let's just grow up. Let's just stop this backstabbing, lying. Let's start working together. I'm kind of sick and tired of seeing three against two, three against two, three against two. Let's work together. As you said, Mayor Black, I really appreciate your comments, and I hope it's not just lip service. This is a great city to live in. I wanted to see progress. I mean, I'm like the one who said, "Ew, no, I don't like progress. Let's leave the little city the way it is." Okay, so we have progress. That's good. So we're sharing our peace of heaven with the rest of the world. That's great. So we have more tall buildings to bring more people to come stay. That's awesome. That's called progress. At first, I was against all of that, but then I saw it really kind of does work. We do live in heaven. Let's make it heaven. Let's stop the backstabbing. Let's stop the immaturity. This is not reality TV. I don't care what's going on in Washington, DC. This is not Washington. This is Madeira Beach. I love this place, and I really expect you guys to rise to the occasion and stop the BS. Thanks.
Stephen Rayo, 557 Crystal Drive. I have felt for a long time that something needs to change in the way we elect our commissioners. By this, I mean that why should a person, a citizen, that lives in District Number Three, vote for a commissioner or against a commissioner that's running in District Number Two? This government has been set up in every other jurisdiction with only citizens voting for the people that represent them. Otherwise, there can be a chance that votes could be manipulated so that people that don't have the best interests of their district could be placed into office. If we have more votes coming in for a District Number Three commissioner candidate from District Number Four, for instance, or Number One, for instance, who's electing the commissioner of Number Three? The people of Number Three or the people of Number Four? I think this needs to change. I know it's been argued many years ago when I brought this up. Now, oh, we're such a small town. I think the size of our town is irrelevant. If there are twenty people in District Number Two that want Candidate A, and ten people in District Number Two that want Candidate B, then Candidate B should be elected by the people that live in that district. I hope you will consider this change in our method of electing commissioners. The mayor should be the only one to run at large. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Bill Gay, 423 150th Avenue, on Madeira Beach. Mayor Black, can I have a copy of Judge Day's ruling?
Certainly. Oh, no, I can't give it to you right now, though.
Nancy, do you understand that you violated the Sunshine Act and have been sanctioned by Mayor Day? Do you understand that?
Point of order.
Pardon?
It's not a dialogue.
Terry, do you understand that? Well, I think you talked over, I think, I think you talked over Mary, I think you talked over Mayor Black, which I find very disgusting. She did not allow her to finish the statement that she was making, and I would like to have her finish that statement and read the judgment made by Mayor Black. Did you finish it? Thank you. One of the problems with this commission, the way it's been acting, is that documents from the court, documents from the Ethics Commission have not been released to the public. Those documents need to be posted on the website so that the citizens of Madeira Beach can understand what's been taking place here during the last several years. So I request that all of the documents, in terms of the ethics complaints that were released to Tom Trask, be posted on the website. The court rulings by the Circuit Court and the Appellate Court, Division of the Circuit Court, should be posted on the city's website for all citizens to get a better understanding of what's been taking place here in Madeira Beach. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment is now closed. All right, we're on unfinished business now, and, well, let's start with, well, we'll start with, okay, we'll go the... So the first item is pulled over from the consent agenda is the purchase of wireless phone, wireless microphone system for the commission chamber.
Madam Mayor and commissioners, you know, this is the third time around on this thing, and I just want to say from the start, you know, I took this on because I got feedback that the commission wanted a change in the setting and to have a workshop-type setting for, like, budget that was informal, so they could talk and have more flexibility instead of being on a dais here. And I guess I took it upon myself to check out the most difficult part of that is the microphone system and how that interacts with the audio stream and getting it to connect with our audiovisual equipment. It's no easy, inexpensive way to do this, and there's nobody that doesn't want to spend more. I don't want to spend more money if we don't have to. So I'm presenting this for a third time, and this is the lowest price. Commissioner Oakley was good enough to show me where she found on the internet the same microphones at a much reduced price. But what we're paying here, unfortunately, and I don't like it either, we're paying our existing network people to hook this up, to configure it, so that it's going to work, and they're going to guarantee that. And they're going to train our staff. So it's no easy task, and I guess I'm at the point where I just want direction from the commission. If you don't want to do this, this is the most inexpensive way to do it. And I bet, yes, if you don't want to do it, that's fine with me, because, you know, to do this, I'm going to have to find the money someplace else to put, to cover this, and I can make that happen.
Mr. Pierce, may I say something?
Yes.
Okay. The way I was looking at it on this here, information that we have, there's one receiver, eight channels. So that means there's eight speakers?
There's one receiver, four tabletop wireless microphones, one charger.
Okay.
And that's all the units that go with it. There's three main components, a base station, a charging base, and the microphones themselves.
Well, the thing I was...
You need all that to work.
I understand. Well, the thing I was looking at on this also was the fact that our workshops at two o'clock in the afternoon, half the time, there's hardly anybody here. And even if we did have, let's say, maybe twenty people, and we set it up this way, does that mean the twenty people have to come up and take turns talking into the mic? And if that's the situation, what's the difference by using the podium? That's what I don't understand. If it's just the mics like we have right here, you know, let's say we only have eight set up on the table, we've got twenty people, and if they all want to speak...
We could have a separate microphone just for people who did want to address the commission. The basic purpose of the workshop is the interaction with the commission during the workshop.
Right. I understand.
You know, a good example would be, and when I first came here, I kind of missed it a little bit because I am used to a budget workshop where it is more informal and not on a dais like this, so that there can be department heads and the commission together, sort of like what we did at the strategic planning workshop.
I just don't really see the advantage of doing it this way, to be honest with you. I really don't.
It's kind of like the way we used to do it.
We used to have them in that little room at the...
I know, but it's the same kind of setup. It's more informal instead of being like the...
Well, were those meetings recorded?
Yes.
And so if we could do it in that room, why can't we do it here?
She had, what, did she have one of those things, it was a microphone that just recorded, and it was one box that sat at the end of the table by her? And she put tapes in it, you know? When the tape ran out, then she put another tape in it. Yeah, it was that long ago.
I just feel like the price of ten thousand, ten thousand forty-nine dollars, that's a lot of money, and I just feel like we're getting the same benefit of having people come to the podium and speak with the microphone there.
Well, they could still come to the podium, I'm guessing.
Right. But so what's the advantage then in getting the speakers here?
Because, as we were saying, it's a more informal atmosphere.
I do understand, but why spend the ten thousand for this if the people are still going to come to the podium?
Because it's for us. It's not for the people who are coming to the podium. It's so that we can all speak, and they'll be able to speak too.
I thought, I thought the purpose behind this was for us to be down there, or the committees to be down there, in like a round table, so the committees can work together, but they can still all be heard, versus, you know, the budget committee, the bid committee, the charge committee's doing, talking across this way. Excuse me. They would sit in a round table or whatever.
And we'd all look each other.
Yeah, and be able to work on things together. And I think that was the purpose behind that, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, you know? So, and get away from the formal and get into the more informal, especially for the committees. And that's what we were talking about. I mean, if we want to keep it this way, and the committees, you know, like talking across this way, you know, and the budget, the bid, the charter, whatever, talking this way, you know, we could do that too. I mean, if you're totally against spending the money. But the whole idea behind it was to have it more informal and them sitting and looking each other in the eye and talking and saying, "Okay, how about this on the bid or the budget or whatever?" That was my understanding. And that's, I'm wrong. Am I correct, Walt?
That is correct.
When we had the strategic planning session, was that recorded?
I believe it, I believe it was, but we weren't able to hardly pick up any sound at all.
Oh, okay. And my problem with this is just the price. You know, it seems like there must be some other solution that's cheaper. You know, it seems like there must be some other solution that's cheaper.
You know, you know, if you're worried about pricing, let's vote against it, you know. I was just, I thought it was more brought up just strictly for doing the committees and stuff like that so they could work in a roundtable discussion type of atmosphere was the purpose behind that.
Do the committee meetings have to be recorded?
Yes. Yes.
I thought we were banned to go into the committees. We can't go to the committee meetings, not more than one of us.
Say again, please?
Not more than one of us can go to the committee meetings.
No, but they have the advantage of using the microphones.
But they're recorded as well?
Right, they are recorded, but we can't go, as a group, we can't.
No.
Is that true, can we go and not, just not speak?
Actually, if you had the public notice say that one or more commissioners may be in attendance, you can actually go to the meeting and you can speak, under Sunshine Law.
I think it's under a charter that says, you know, it's recommended not to go because, you know, if you, if you go in,
We're kind of influencing the body.
I'll check the charter.
It says that, I mean, you can interpret it any way you want, but we're not supposed to go.
Well, even if you don't go, if you're watching it from home, you know, because there's, it'll be televised also, I'm assuming, you know, and if they're sitting down there, if we're going to be able to hear them at home, you know, unless we leave them up here, it doesn't matter to me. You know, we can leave them up here, or we can put them down there in a more of a working thing. Something maybe we need to talk about more again at a workshop to see what we want to do, or if we can vote against it tonight, you know. I think it's kind of like Walt said, you know, either way, he just wants to know that we want to move forward with it or not.
Does anybody know how much these microphones cost?
Not sure.
That'd be interesting to find out.
I can find out for you. What Alan indicated, network people, when he came here at the workshop, that he did get a quote for a fixed microphone setting like this down there, and it was $15,000, $20,000. So the fixed portion of what we have here would be much more. So again, the, the, the microphones that are easy movable are more flexible, and it's the least expensive way to go. But there is a lot to this. I mean, it's implementation, it's configure, to configure with our AV stuff back there, training of our staff. If we purchase this, it's going to be like a day and a half type setup and education and training of our staff. We're behind that door right now, recording.
I think I'd like to make a kind of a recommendation that we hold off on this for the time being.
Let's do it.
Table. All right, let's table it.
Okay.
The next item is the purchase of valves from WayPro Inc. Mr. Mercicano?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a purchase of six WayPro valves that are going to go into the end of the stormwater pipes that will prevent the high tidal issues that we have in that neighborhood from backflowing through the pipes and flooding the neighborhoods when we are not having a rain event. Staff recommendation is for approval. This is a sole sourced item. All your proper documentation should have been attached in your packet.
And so Dave, there just was a substantial difference in price for the, for the different sizes. Obviously, we can see the thirty inches is a little over $10,000, and the sixteen inches a little less than $44,000. So obviously, the size of the, of the valve makes a big difference. I can see with, with each drawing. It looks like there's going to be five in the project that we just finished, and the other one's on Pruitt? Yeah, and again, this is six, and we have, how many do we have again? It was $170,000 or something?
Seventy.
And I know we're not putting them on every one, but there's got to be, there's got to be a few more that we're going to have to do in the future.
Yes.
Is there a mobilization cost for, for putting these six in, and then a mobilization cost for putting the next six in? Or is it going to be, he's going to get better with it as time goes by?
We'll get better with it as time goes by.
So we could conceivably see these prices go down slightly in,
We will definitely see them go down, and not the purchase of the WayPro.
Right.
But the installation piece of, that will go down.
And you don't think that, that, well, we're going to be watching for sure. As a matter of fact, I would, I would like to be there when they install one of the, ones in my neighborhood just to, just to watch, but that, that sounds good. I know as I canvass my neighborhood to get some of my candidacy cards, I, I talked to several people, and there's a lot of outflows in 135th, and even, you know, all of our parking parks are outflows, and none of those are getting done right now, but there is a lot of water that comes up through those during a king tide. And, you know, it was my first year to be associated with a king tide. I wasn't exactly sure what that was, but I know it was one of the highest tides that I've had since eighty-two. But there was a lot of residents that said that their water came up, and I promised them, and I shouldn't say I promised them, but I told them we'd look into putting these on more than just these five outflows in, in the Boca Seagull Drive.
And you're absolutely correct. And we'll, we're going to update the stormwater plan, and with that, I'll bring you my recommendations on where we go from forward with this.
Fantastic.
You know, this was a trial to get these things put in.
Yeah.
Let me see how easy it is to get them in, how hard it is to get them in. And then going forward into the next budget year, you'll see WayPro valves on there, and I'll be asking for some more budgeted money in order to get those projects done.
Completely, thank you very much for answering that question.
Yeah, good question for you. The price on these compared to the other ones we were originally looking at was like, the other ones were like $25,000 or something ridiculous.
Yes, we're substantial, we're almost $28,000 with the installation of one valve.
Okay, what's the maintenance difference between these and the more expensive?
The guys in Anna Maria and the other folks that I've talked to on the East Coast, very little maintenance, which is not the case with the other valves we were looking at.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
These people on Pruitt are going to be very happy you did this because that is one of the worst streets down there.
Yes, yes, they, they all call me, they've got me on speed dial.
I bet they do.
Any more discussion from the board? The floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. At this time, entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass a, a contract with WAPRO, for six valves for the amount of $28,909.
Second. Any more comments from the commissioner staff? Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance 2017-13. City Clerk?
Yes, this is an annual ordinance that by charter the city commission has to approve. Tonight is second reading and public hearing, and I'll read this by title only. Ordinance 2017-13, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on March 13, 2018, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for District One and a commissioner for District Two, providing authorization for the City of Madeira Beach through its city clerk to contract with the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County Camisay Board as a canvassing board for the March 13, 2018 election, authorizing for runoff election if necessary, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict within, herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Any comments from the commission? The floor is now open for public comment. Floor is now closed. Who have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-13 on the second reading and public hearing.
I'll second that. Any more comments from the commission? City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have the appointment of the regular membership to the Planning Committee. City Clerk?
Yes, we have one vacancy on the Planning Commission due to a resignation of a member, and I have three applicants that applied, and the commission is to approve one. And it's for a regular membership, and this term expires August 15, 2018, and at which time the applicant can apply for a regular three-year term. So it's a partial term.
I make a motion that we appoint Ruth Cabella.
I'll second that.
Madam City Clerk, just a quick question. When it says that John Hendricks was a appointed, I mean, an alternate member of the Budget Committee and the Charter Committee?
This was, the commission appointed, made those appointments on October 10, 2017.
Again, I'm just, I'm confused whether he's an alternate on the Budget Committee, I read that, and the Charter Committee, is he an alternate on the Charter Committee also?
He's alternate, alternate member to the Budget Committee and the Charter Committee. And he's a, he's a regular member to the Bid Committee and the Civil Service Committee.
I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
Yes, normally, the way we do this is that they're here in the audience, they come up and introduce themselves to let us know.
Does anyone want to come up and introduce themselves?
Hi, I'm Ruth Cabella.
Can't hear you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Cabella. I've been a real estate broker in the area for, in Madeira Beach for over thirty years, and a real estate broker for over thirty-five years. I live at 15337 Harbor Drive.
Thank you. Any of the other candidates wish to speak? Yes, John.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. I've been a Madeira Beach resident for thirty-two years, owned property in Madeira Beach for thirty-two years. I was transferred away for eight years and retired and came back to home. I've been concerned about Madeira Beach for many years, and as you know, I've been pretty involved in things going on here, and I'd like to continue being involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Neff here? Okay, that would be the only other person to speak. Any more discuss, well, we have a motion, do we have a second? Oh, you did, okay. All right, any more comments from the commission or city staff?
I just wanted to verify with Mr. Hendricks, you're pretty involved in a lot of the committees, and you wanted to remain on the committees?
The floor is open for comment now on this item. Floor is now called, closed. Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
No.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. I'm going to go back in the agenda, it looks like I skipped over the contracts and agreements. So we'll go back there to the Complis Data Innovations Incorporated Agreement. Mr. Pierce?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this was initially presented before to the commission, and more information was needed. We do have Bob Rabel here today from Compass, and he can answer some questions that you might have.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Bob Rabel. I work at, I live at 5569 Fairlane Drive, Northport, Florida, and I work for Complis Data. I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that you have. We are proud to have serviced you for the last three years, and we're glad that the, we're able to upgrade the city of Madeira Beach to our new handhelds that are now going to be able to interface with your CalA meters. And in the event you go to a mobile payment, that interface is also available. So it's real-time data transfer, and it helps you, as a city, go to a smart parking enforcement program. It's nice to see that you're making this change.
We're excited about it as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Rob,
I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Is the city responsible for all repairs on these things, is what I'm reading in this?
No, they have a, we'll, we'll take care of those for thirty-six months.
For six months, then after that, the city's 100% responsible for any repairs needed?
We are responsible.
You are?
Correct.
Okay, because it says here, the equipment, we're going to station it.
There's a thirty-six month warranty on the equipment.
Okay.
Support. After thirty-six months, if you decide to renew again, if we're fortunate enough to be at that point, thirty-six months, if there's another upgrade, we'll be happy to do that for you.
And how many of these are being issued to the city?
Two.
Two.
You have two now, you're getting a replacement for the two. The two that you have now work off of Wi-Fi. The two that you'll be getting are, it's an integrated cellphone, it's an Android cellphone, so you have, as soon as your PEO issues that citation, that data is immediately transferred to our database and to your database. And it also is an interface with the CalA system, and it's also, there's an interface with a mobile phone by payment if you want to go with that route later.
Exactly, what, what are you issuing? Because it says here, you're, you're providing us with handhelds, phones, and printers, and other equipment?
Correct.
What all, I don't understand everything that's being involved.
It's, it's very similar to what you have now. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a similar program to what you've had for the past three years. The only change is we are upgrading your handhelds. That's the only change.
Thank you.
It's a major change for you, it's, it's an improvement in your technology.
Thank you.
One thirty-six months will probably be changed again because the technology is just moving so fast.
That is correct.
And the machines probably won't be working in thirty-six months because the salt will wear them out.
If, if for some reason there's an interface that, that wears out, we, we replace it. You have, they're under warranty, so that's nothing.
Okay, great.
Mr. Rob, was that the case with the first two handhelds that we had on the original agreement? Was that the case? Did we, did we get the first two handhelds free, or did we buy the first two handhelds?
Um, no.
You know, the ones that we have now?
The ones you had now.
Right, were they included in your first original contract?
That is correct.
Okay, at twelve and a half percent?
That is correct.
And you're just taking twelve and a half percent of the revenue of whatever we make? So four, five years ago, when did you start? You started when we put the machines in.
Three years ago, 2014, I believe.
Yes, that's right, we put the machines in five years ago. We took on you three years ago just to bring down the cost of this, which your company did do it for a much less cost, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think that the understanding that I was at the last time it was presented to this commission was we were going to have to purchase the two handhelds for the, for the, for them to work, but that was never the case.
No.
That was never the case, you were always going to just come back at this twelve and a half percent. My only concern is, I've been making, why, we, the City of Madeira Beach, have been upping that amount since we put them in three years ago. Every, for three years, that amount's been going up, and your percentage has been staying the same. But I was hoping that sooner or later down the road, when our, you know, revenue gets up to $2 million or somewhere in that neighborhood, that the percentage would, would start to go down because it's a much higher number. Do you have a plateau where we're, where we're trying to get to so that that percentage goes down to 10%? And I'm not saying it would, but just throw a number out there.
Well, we look at it every year when we do the renewal.
Sure.
In three years from now, if your rev, your revenue, I believe, has stayed fairly, when I looked at it, the last year has stayed flat. So I'm not sure what, I may, I may,
I'm sure Mr. Pierce can elaborate on that more. I, I thought it was at least $200,000 more.
Which is good.
We raised the price of the actual parking.
It has been increasing, yes.
Yeah, it was substantially. Yeah, it was substantially more, but.
Well, to your point?
Yes, sir.
If, what we are doing this time, at this point, is giving you an equipment upgrade with no, with no cost in the percentage.
And I like that, that's good, that's a perk.
Yes.
It's always good to get a perk.
Yes.
So you're going to reevaluate in 36 months, and tell me if I can drop that percentage?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We want to keep you for life.
Like Commissioner Oakley said, in 36 months, that technology will probably be old, and we're going to get a perk by getting new equipment, I'm sure.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Riebel.
We have a very high retention rate, and we want to keep you. We want to do everything we can to keep this partnership together.
Fantastic, thank you again.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
By the way, I am a Vietnam veteran, and I'm so pleased that everything this city is doing for veterans. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we accept this contract between Complis Data Innovations and the city.
I'll second. All right, do we have any comments from the audience? All right, public comment is now closed. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have an agreement with CPWG to provide CEI services on Gulf Boulevard for resurfacing.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor, this has been before you before with the DOT LAP project. Actually, it's not a LAP project now, but the DOT project for resurfacing Gulf Boulevard, and CPWG is going to provide all those inspection services for us to make sure that we're getting absolutely what we paid for.
Is this a state pass-through thing?
Yes.
Where we're getting all the money back from the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it 100% reimbursement?
Yes, sir.
1.9 million, somewhere around that?
Yes. Staff recommendations for approval, please.
Can you tell me if the undergrounding, as it goes forward, is going to have any effect on this? I know we're going into the right of way with the undergrounding. Is it going to have any effect with this, on the pavement at all?
I don't believe so. I might have a little bit, but I don't think so. We didn't do too much on this end of town, so. But.
That four blocks was a bear.
It's ongoing, but we'll have, we're in the process of getting those easements now, so that project is getting underway.
I know we probably, we delayed it because of the islands that we put in, wasn't it? Because this was supposed to happen a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, we're just pressed a little bit back.
Right, and, okay, thanks.
The floor is now open for public comment? Yes, sir.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. The only question, I had a question, it's not really a, I guess it's a comment. There's a water leak, it's with a reclaim on Gulf Boulevard at roughly 149th. It's about 30 feet underground, and my concern is eventually we may have a car drop in there, and I was wondering if it could be addressed before the resurfacing?
I will contact you, Mr. Hendricks, to answer your question.
Yes, my name is Gabby Weinstein, 441-129th Avenue. I was just curious, when was the last time Gulf Boulevard was resurfaced? It just didn't seem like it was that many years ago.
Been a couple of years or so.
They just resurfaced in front of the pass.
They did not, they just did the pass.
Wait a minute, I'm asking Mr. Morrison.
I'll comment on that. The, alls they did was a half-inch overlay, they did not repave. So this project was pushed off due to the fact that we were going to try to underground the electric underneath Gulf Boulevard. That did not work out, okay? So we're going to have to do another avenue. But this is the repaving that was supposed to be done back then, that's why it's a pass-through from DOT. And Mr. Hendricks, I'll get back to you on your comment, that's a little bit more in depth.
Yeah, because it was called resurfacing, and I remember that word.
They're not going to do it during spring break, are they? Please.
We have no FDOT.
I do have a little bit of control of that, and I'm trying. I'm trying.
Don't promise.
Well, no, I'm not, yeah.
I just remember Blind Pass to John's Pass was an hour trip last year.
Well, I don't.
I wonder if they did that.
We're not, we're going to hopefully not do that. Don't hold me to it, though, but I'm working towards that. Working towards the end of April for the beginning, or I'm sorry, end of April, beginning of May. We should be okay.
Okay.
It is going to be an inconvenience?
Oh, yes.
Okay, there's no question. Boca Sienna, when I did that neighborhood, people weren't able to get to their houses for five to seven days at a time. We made it through that, I think we can get through this.
Any more public comment? Public comment is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the contract between CPWG and the city of Madeira Beach.
We have a monetary amount on there not to exceed, it's on the third page. Should we say that, Mr. Brooks? It's in the contract, we have a monetary.
Yes, it's in the contract, and that's my job to hold their feet to the fire, and I'll do it.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Any more comments from the commission or staff? The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next, we have Wally versus City of Madeira Beach, settlement of litigation. Mr. City Attorney? We did that.
We didn't.
I think we did the election ordinance, but not the budget ordinance, we need to go back and do that.
Oh.
You didn't do the ordinance for the budget amendment?
Right.
Right here.
Oh, okay, I got those two mixed up. All right, well, let's go back to that then. Ordinance 2018, First Budget Amendment to Fiscal Year 2018 Annual Budget First Reading. Mr. Attorney?
Ordinance 2018-01 by Title Only, and Ordinance of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year 2018, which is beginning October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2018, by appropriating funds for increasing the general fund budget and adopting a budget amendment.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, as Dave indicated, the project with FDOT, this budget amendment is a good part of that. This budget amendment is $1,960,313, and the amount that we can exceed through FDOT for that project that Dave mentioned is 1.920260. And the other part of this budget amendment is another federal grant for $40,053, which was a federal funds FEMA firefighter's grant that we already received, the funds, and we have already expended those funds in this month.
Any discussion from the board?
Just, do you have an estimated time of that money coming back to us through FDOT? After the project's finished, it's money upfront that we spend, right?
They're pretty, they're really good about turning that money around.
Okay.
Patrick, I believe, in Walt's office deals with that stuff, and he's never indicated to me that he's had any kind of issue. So with the Gulf Boulevard beautification, all those things got turned around real quick.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more comment? Floor is open for public comment? Floor is now closed.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance 2018-01.
I'll second that. Any more discussion from staff or commission? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. I think we're caught up now. Wally versus City of Madeira Beach, settlement of litigation.
Yes, this is a settlement of a code enforcement case that was appealed to the Circuit Court. The Circuit Court sent the code enforcement case back to the special magistrate. The audio recording was lost, and there was no record of the proceeding, so the Circuit Court ordered the case to be retried and re-held. The violator has pled guilty in this settlement agreement, rather than have to go through the whole proceeding all over again. So that would be an admission of guilt of the second violation of the short-term rental violation, and they would pay $914 in administrative costs. The property owner is in compliance with the short-term or long-term rental requirements, according to the inspector, and Shannon Roxby is here. She did some of the inspections. There may be other violations on the property, but this addresses the short-term rental violation.
So is he caught up on his fines, then?
He would pay here the, an administrative cost of $914.
Okay.
So do we know what the first violation was? If this is the second violation, do we know?
It was also a short-term rental violation. And now in compliance, his rental terms are long enough.
So that one's been cleared, too?
Well, we have here, the properties come into compliance, so the purpose of code enforcement is to bring properties into compliance with regard to these particular violations. He is in compliance now, and he has admitted guilt to the two violations. If there were to be a future violation, that would be a repeat offense, and we could implement the repeat offender provisions of the Code Enforcement Section.
Thank you very much. Could I get the deputy to come up? Do we inspect on a regular basis for that unit? I know Tom's been up here, what, three times now? He's been up here three times, and now he's settling, he's not even here. He should be waving the flag.
Yeah, I know.
You know?
I actually haven't inspected this property. It was a different deputy that did it. He is advertising still, but his advertisements now are in compliance. He's advertising for three months, instead of before, he was doing weekends or just nightly. So as far as his advertisements, those are in compliance, but his renters that are in there right now, I have not spoken to.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I thought it was you that did the inspections. I apologize. Got you, okay.
If we go out there and find a new violation, that would then be written up as a new violation, as a repeat offense. And this would help, because he's now admitted guilt to the second violation.
I know that he's concerned.
It was my understanding, it was a substantial amount of money.
The fines kept building, and, yeah.
So what I would prefer, and I don't know if I can even do this.
Well, if we have to go back and get the fines, we're going to have to rehold the hearing and go through the penalty phase and get all that time. The penalties for this second violation haven't kicked in because it was appealed, and the court said that they would not uphold any daily penalties, so that's why we're, come back. We'd have to rehold that hearing, and then daily penalties would start from a time to come into compliance. The special magistrate would say, well, you now have five days, or must even immediately come into compliance. If he's already in compliance, we wouldn't have any daily penalties accruing.
So how are the special magistrate proceedings done now? I mean, they're obviously recorded, right?
Apparently, there was a loss of this tape, and it happened before I was here. I'm not sure how that happened, but there was no record whatsoever.
Again, I understand what you just said, but how are they recorded now? Are they, how are they kept?
Shannon?
Same way they're recorded now. As far as I know, he was taken to a special magistrate hearing last January and was found guilty, and so he has been getting fined daily since last year.
Yeah.
Since that recording got lost, he appealed it.
That ended, that, okay.
I think the clerk can answer, too, how they are recorded now. Isn't there a way they record them now that's different?
They were recorded by live stream and also by Sonaclear, but I'm not sure how they record. But the Planning Commission is in here, and I'm not sure where the code enforcement meets.
Here.
Right here.
Yes.
So they're using the same system.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And, you know, I think Tom's going to be happy with $914, that's for sure. Okay, I'm good with that.
All right, next we have the filing of declaratory judgment and injunctive relief regarding the sufficiency of grounds of recall. Mr. City Attorney? On the settlement, I don't, we don't have to vote on this settlement?
Um, yes, if we vote to approve the settlement, then we can have the city manager sign it.
Oh, okay.
We get a motion in a second. I'm sorry, I missed, I thought you voted on it.
I thought the court just said that it's done.
We can get a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion that we accept the settlement of litigation.
Second.
Any more discussion? The floor is now open for public comment? Floor is now closed for public comment? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Again, now we're at the filing of declaratory judgment and injunctive relief regarding the sufficiency of the grounds of recall.
In this case, as you well know, there has been a recall petition that was filed. The prior city attorney, Erica Argila, on November 17th, 2017, issued a memorandum opinion. In that memorandum opinion, she determined that the legal sufficiency of grounds for the recall petition, in her opinion, were insufficient to allege malfeasance. That's attached to your packet. She talked about the city filing a declaratory or injunctive relief action as a potential way to address that. At that time, she had looked at an Attorney General Opinion 1980, Attorney General Opinion 187, that said that the city could not pay for the defense of a recall petition. Subsequent to that 1980 Attorney General Opinion, there was a case Farrarrah versus Caves in 1985, and another case in 1982, in which the Florida courts have held that a public officer is entitled to a defense at public expense in defending suits or misconduct charges while performing his public duties and while serving a public purpose. And in the case of Farrarrah, the district court considered the obligation of a municipality to pay a reasonable attorney's fees for a suit by the mayor and two council members seeking declaratory and injunctive relief against a recall petition precipitated by their votes on a proposed ordinance. The court relied on its ruling in this other case, LaMelo, from 1982, and held that the city was under an obligation to reimburse these city officials their attorney's fees. And in a more recent case, Garvin versus Jerome, the Florida Supreme Court decided that public officials should not face removal from office they were lawfully and properly elected to on a ballot that contains illegal grounds for recall and express violations of the recall statute. If indeed the recall petition grounds are legally insufficient, the election should clearly be enjoined, and that was the Garvin versus Jerome, and also the Bent versus Ballantyne case by the Florida Supreme Court from back in 1979. It was reaffirmed here in this Garvin versus Jerome in the year 2000. So what this item would be is to file a declaratory and injunctive action in Circuit Court on behalf of the two city officials. If they are successful, and the court enjoins the recall petition for having insufficient legal grounds, then they would be entitled to reimbursement of attorney's fees expended in bringing that action. And so that's what I would propose that the city do. The judge will determine whether the grounds are sufficient or not. The case would be brought against the petitioners committee and the supervisor of elections. And open up for discussion and questions.
So are you going to be the attorney that handles it?
Yes, I can be the attorney that handles it, and I'll keep separate billings. If you're victorious in the case, and the recall petition ballot is enjoined. If you're victorious in the case and the recall petition ballot is enjoined, then you'll be entitled to reimbursement of those fees. If not, and for some reason, the court determined that it was malfeasance and was outside the scope of your official duties, you may have to pay those costs on your own individually.
Okay.
You are entitled to a defense. We can bring the request for reimbursement back at the end of the case.
So you're not actually using public funds unless you win?
Right.
So if you lose, you're going to pay for it?
They, well, they have to pay for it, and then if they win, they would be reimbursed their attorney's fees.
With, with public money, obviously?
Yes.
Which would be your billing, and you're done separately. And your billing would be at the rate that you charge.
The same rate, 185. They're entitled to choose whatever lawyer they want. If they want another lawyer, you can choose another lawyer. And that lawyer, whatever their hourly fees, would, if you were to succeed, then you would submit your attorney's fees that you pay to whatever lawyer you have, or whatever reasonable rate to the city, and you'd be entitled to reimbursement.
And I'm confused. Is that how you, you get around the opinion of the attorney general in 1980? Is because you're not, you're not giving any funds up until you're proven innocent?
Well, the attorney general opinion in 1989, that's correct. It's a reimbursement of attorney's fees rather than a defense going in. They don't, they don't make a distinction because that question wasn't really asked. In the 1989 opinion, the case had been resolved, and they were seeking reimbursement of fees. They didn't ask the question at the beginning of the case, they asked it at the end of the, the end of the case. So we don't have an opinion really about going forward, of the city paying going forward. But '89 replaces the '80 based on the Supreme Court cases that happened in the interim.
What do we need to do on this now, Mr. Commission? Anything?
Well, I think maybe a consensus or a motion to, to, to file a declaratory and injunctive relief action with, under those conditions, that if you were to succeed, then you would then submit an application for reimbursement of attorney's fees. I, whoever attorney you choose.
I'll make that motion, too. How exactly do I need to word it, I guess is what I'm not sure of.
Well, I, actually, you know, you're going to be filing this on your own. The name will not be the city of Madeira Beach.
Correct.
It would be you as a city official, John Doer, as Commissioner, District Four, are you?
Correct.
And then Nancy Oakley as Commissioner, District Three, as individual city officials versus the petitioners committee and the supervisor of elections. So the city doesn't really have to take any action until after the case is over. Once it's over, if you were to succeed, then there would be an application coming forward for reimbursement, which the attorney general says you're entitled to.
So tonight's more FYI?
Tonight, I don't think you have to do anything as a city commission or as the Board of Commissioners of Madeira Beach, but it will be coming forward to you in the, in the future, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew what was happening.
And if the judge finds that it is not sufficient, is that just stop everything?
Yes.
Okay.
So then tonight, it was just FYI, correct?
Yeah, but it's important that I think that we know what's being filed and why, and how it may come back to the city commission for approval of legal fees in the future. That's all I have for that.
Do we, are we going to vote on this?
No.
No, there's no need to vote at this time.
Oh, okay.
It'll depend on the court, it'll depend on how, how the court rules.
Okay. All right, next, the reports and correspondence. City Commission, the only thing I wanted to report is, it said on the minutes, not the minutes, on the agenda, that at this meeting, that we will be talking about when we're going to have a meet and greet for the committee meetings.
Yes. Well, it's actually, we changed the title of it. It's going to be, the city attorney is going to give a briefing on sunshine law and ethics for the groups before they get started.
And public records also, because there's a lot of new commit, new advisory board members.
Yes. And he checked his calendar and everything. We're going to do this for February the 13th at 3:00. That's the same day of our regular meeting in February, and we're going to send a letter out to all the board members informing them of the meeting now. We hope that everyone comes. And it is open to the public. It will be noticed, and we're ready to get started.
When do the committees start after that?
We're going to put meetings together right after that for February, and in that letter will also be when that meeting will be. And then at that meeting, the each board will choose their chairman, their vice chair, and they will put their meeting schedule together when they want to meet for the year.
Okay.
Will that be streamed? Will it be recorded?
Yes.
Afterwards, can you see it?
It's going to be right here, and it will be recorded, yes, ma'am.
So we can see it afterwards?
Yes, ma'am.
Any more reports from the city commission? City attorney, anything else?
No, Your Honor.
Uh, city manager?
No, ma'am.
And city clerk?
No.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a little bit of a report. A citizen came up the last meeting when I was given my final financial report for the, for the year, and asked for the rec, recreation figures, and I wasn't, I didn't have those figures in front of me. And I think in the interest of transparency, I'd like to give unaudited figures just for the, just for that purpose. Revenues for the REC Center, actual for 2017, came in at $420,556.81, and that was over budget by $151,056.81. Does take cost to run the REC Center. The REC Center's total cost of expenditures, actual, and again, this is unaudited, is $866,088.47. That was under budget by $90,891.53. I have to give the REC Center some credit for doing a good job, but I also got to credit Darrell. Darrell took this, um, he, he really watched some of the expenditures in this department, in particular, the promotional account, which was under by almost $21,000. He set procedures into effect for events and wanted to know what those events were, the cost before and after, and I think he did a good job.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's 7:59, and the meeting is adjourned.